I think we're all here, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order and ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Here, present remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Dunbar.
I am here from South Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Garza.
I'm present, participating remotely from South Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Hussein.
Present, participating remotely from southwest Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present, participating remotely from the Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present, participating remotely from Lansing in the room I've been trapped in since March 12th.
Councilmember Spitzley.
I'm just here, guys, participating remotely from Lansing.
Okay. At least you're not trying to succeed.
No, not right now, not right now. I reserve my right.
I'm present, I am participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
All right, thank you. We are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Hey, does anybody have anyone that we would like to keep in our thoughts for our moment of meditation? Either the mayor, the clerk, or the councilmembers. Councilmember Wood, please.
If we could remember the Garza family, Jeremy losing his grandmother this past week and that. If we could remember his family, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Yes, Councilmember Garza, thoughts to you and your family right now. Councilmember Betts.
Thank you. Mine feels a little bit further away, but I've been thinking a lot about the Biden administration this week and the monumental tasks that they have moving forward. And just like to keep them in our thoughts as they start out their first hundred days and all the work that they're planning on doing, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. I don't see others, so I'm going to ask that we keep the Biden administration and the folks that are working national level. And then Councilmember Garza and his family in our thoughts as we reflect for a moment. Okay. See if I can do this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay.
You have for your approval the printed council proceedings of January 4th and 11th.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move the printed council proceedings for the 4th and 11th as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Are there any questions or comments regarding the proceedings? Seeing none, if the clerk will please call the roll.
On the proceedings, Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
AAs, zero NAs, the proceedings are approved and we are now to the consideration of late items.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move for the suspension of council rule number nine to allow for a late item specifically. And I know we'll talk a little bit more about this later in the agenda, but specifically a debt elimination plan that pertains to our special assessments fund. We were told recently that we're up against a pretty tight state deadline in terms of filing. So this was referred, I believe, to the Ways and Means Committee on the 11th. When we referred that, we were not aware of the time sensitivity piece to this matter. So seeing as we have not yet established a Ways and Means Committee and the fact that this has to be filed in short order with the state. We are hoping that we can take a look at this tonight for consideration and approval. Thank you.
Thank you. So there is a motion. And I just like to say to folks, my apologies, I don't like to spring things on you if we don't have to. But this was one that was was pushed through the process properly, just with the transition again of January. We didn't have a way to get this through the committee, so I spoke with committee chairman and the vice president and we're going to comfortable moving forward with this this evening. So I would recommend supporting of the late addition. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On suspending the rules, Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
As you're in a's, the late item is added and we will add that on to the resolutions. That takes us to comments by council members and the city clerk.
Sure, I am gonna start because we have, I want to say something, congratulating Councilmember Hussein, our vice president. In his day job as a dedicated educator, he was nominated for the One Class at a Time program. This is to recognize outstanding educators in the field and congratulations on that recognition, Mr. Vice President. I know I saw your interview, you did a very nice job, but you know, I think sometimes we forget that we all have lifestyle side of this Zoom chamber. And yours is one that you've been recognized for doing some stellar work in, so congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Of course. Mr. Garza, Representative Garza. Councilmember Garza.
Right, well, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to read into the record. You know, we had our special committee, the whole meeting on January 20th in regards to the City of Lansing Parks and Recreation, five-year recreation plan. And there was definitely a lot of comments. I received a lot of emails in regards to the Morse Park Pool. That is definitely not in my ward, but however, I have many fantastic childhood memories. And you know, I'd love to see my kids have the same memories moving forward. So whatever we can do to support it, you know, I am definitely supportive of that. And also, we had some remarks from one of my constituents from the Scott Woods neighborhood, Miss, I believe it's Patty Lyons. And it's in regards to Scott Woods improvements, they would like to see a complete swing set. Currently, we just have only the one baby swing and one youth swing, two swings in total. Teeter totter, any other playground equipment, additional parking spaces and an expansion of the park boundaries to include various adult recreation areas. And and I'm not sure where the McLaren Hospital, the current campus right now, but I heard rumors of, you know, possibly turning into green space. And if that is in fact a reality, I would love to see, you know, Scott Woods expanded to to accommodate some of these additional requests from the Scott Woods neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garza. Council, Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So speaking of that other hat I wear, I have taught at Waverly Middle School for well over a decade now. And my partner in crime, my social studies co-teacher, Mr. Kevin Case, so he has been the student council advisor probably about the last six or seven years. And he's worked really hard with our students to promote leadership and relationship building advocacy. You know, and really have have has worked closely with those folks that they've worked to kind of impact our school community, really in the broader community. So I could not let the moment pass by without acknowledging that we have my man, Mr. Casel, with us tonight. And a number of our student council officers on hand, my understanding is that they are here just to, yeah, absolutely, to to take in the proceedings and learn, you know, how we run our meetings and what types of things we take up as kind of the policymaking arm of city government. And so I wanted to welcome them first and foremost and thank them for being here. And really thank them for all that they do for our school community and the broader community. The other piece is that I was asked by the Southwest Action Group to extend some appreciation. They had their monthly meeting this past, no, actually was two Thursdays ago, so it was January 14th. And we had a number of people come out and participate in that meeting. And so we really, we certainly appreciated their attendance, particularly in this really kind of quirky time. And we know that so much is taking place, and so folks are really having to prioritize kind of those those evening hours. And so we wanted to say thanks to Chief Green, as well as Mayor Shore, who were both on hand to provide updates on kind of the preparedness activities that the city was engaging in to ensure that we could really afford folks the First Amendment right, right? But to also keep things safe throughout inauguration. We also had Mr. Lisa Fontaine on hand, who is our new director of Neighbors and Citizen Engagement. She was on hand to talk about neighborhood grants. And don't forget, folks, your neighborhood grant applications are due on February 1st. It's incredibly important. She was also there to talk about our town square art. And the folks that have driven by have noticed that one of the panels is gone. That is not the result. Some folks have demonstrated some concern that maybe there was some defacing of that public art. There has been no vandalism, no defacing. There's simply some adjustments being made to make sure that it really reflects what the community was hoping to see with that particular panel. But she was there to talk a little bit about that. We we also had Mr. DeShawn Leek, who was one of our Board of Water and Light Commissioners. And he was on hand to discuss a number of BWL kind of related issues, as well as issues, just as a Southwest Lansing resident, we appreciate that. And then lastly, Mr. Jeffrey Brown from our HRCS Advisory Board was there to discuss grant opportunities for basic human needs and things of that nature. So we wanted to express our appreciation, but I also wanted to announce that the Southwest Action Group's next meeting is on February 11th at 6:00 PM. That will be conducted via Zoom. And so if you are interested in taking part in that, I would highly encourage you all to visit their Facebook page. Again, that's the Southwest Action Group. And meeting links and things of that nature will be shared as we get a little bit closer to that meeting on February 11th. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you. I also want to commend the administration. You know, you never want to prepare or never want to have to prepare for potential violence. But you always, as I say, you hope and pray for the best, but you always prepare for the worst. And so I think it was very nicely done. And so I appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to say is, you know, we're still in this pandemic. And even though the governor has said that she's looking to open up in-person dining, I cannot wait. February 1st, we still need to make sure that we're supporting our local businesses in our local eateries. Going down there, you know, doing a takeout day a week or four or five in my case, because I don't want to cook. But we've got some great places to eat, not only downtown, but all around. And so, you know, just, just if we can just keep lifting them up. And hopefully, February 1st, it'll open up a little bit, so there'll be in-person dining. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Spitzley. And I thank you, Mr. Vice President. I want to welcome the students and staff from Waverly. I do want to say I got my start on Waverly Student Government, so you all be careful, the future might look like this, so just be careful. But thank you. Mr. Clerk.
I do not have any announcements, so we will move on to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the listening audience who is watching us, who has a community event, you can have up to one minute to give us the details. So please raise your hand using the star nine raise hand icon or alt Y or option Y. I'm not seeing anyone.
I see one, Lansing own.
Okay, Lansing's own, go ahead and make your community event announcement. Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Mike with America 20 of the Life. We will be hosting a COVID-19 vaccine virtual town hall February 3rd between 6:00 and 8:00 PM. There's gonna be a panel discussion with live Q and A with the Indian County Health Department. And also three panelists that'll be on there. A Dr. Shoyinka, Dr. Barker, and Andrea King Collier will be on to answer any questions people have related to COVID-19 and the vaccine that's coming out. I didn't hear of anything else going on that day outside of propaganda at 7:00, so we should be all set. We'll see you all there.
No other hands, we will move on to clerk.
Okay, then we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters tonight does include the public hearing, the noise special permit, as well as the ordinances for passage and resolutions under the Resolutions for Action and Consent Agenda, including the late item, the death to elimination plan. So please begin raising your hand for that. We will stop accepting additional raised hands after the first speaker finishes making their comments. And while you are raising your hands, we will move on to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to start by thanking our police officers and our fire and EMS for their preparedness, public service for their preparation and work to make sure that our city stays safe. We did not have any violence surrounding inauguration Sunday before and the Wednesday of, thank goodness, and I think we were ready. I want to thank state police, I want to thank Indian County Sheriff, Governor Whitmer for calling up the National Guard and the National Guards people. Got to say hi to some of those folks who were in City Hall and who were out on the street. We sometimes forget that they are, they are our citizen soldiers, they are our friends and neighbors. I ran into a friend who I didn't even know was the National Guard who was there. These are people just like us walking around who are doing their duty. So I want to thank all of those folks for helping keeping Lansing safe. Similar to, I believe, Councilwoman Spitzley, I want to thank the businesses. We asked folks to stay away on a Sunday from our downtown, and that was difficult. And, you know, they they were great, but everybody remembered it to go check out our businesses all over the city. I think I spend, Councilman Hussein, I think I spend more money at Hungry Howie's for my kids in southwest Lansing than anywhere else, so I'm doing my part. That's where they want to eat. But I do want to thank our businesses. I want to, I'm excited that DLI was able to to get the funding for the light up the night for COVID. They're gonna light up the buildings in downtown. And and we did a light up the night for COVID remembrance. I'm combining two things. We did a light up the night for COVID remembrance last week and DLI got the dollars for for their lighting, so that's exciting. We have a variety of events and things coming up as we try and get people out and active, both between our departments and neighborhoods and our parks department. We have a winner photo contest, which is going on right now. So if you take a picture until January 31st and use the hashtag, hashtag winner in Lansing, you'll be part of the photo contest. Delisa has showed me some of the pictures and they're great, but take a picture in Lansing, use the hashtag. There is a, they call it a snow person contest on February 15th at Let's, snowman, snow woman. There will be a contest February 15th at Let's, so that should be fun. We are working on, I believe, February 24th, we're gonna have snow tubing for Lansing residents at Hawk Island. It's gonna be free, but it's first come, first served, and you have to pre-register with our Parks and Rec Department. If you haven't been to Hawk Island for the snow tubing, you are missing out. It's awesome. Tube, you use a tow rope, pulls you back up. It really is a great time, it's a lot of fun. So we'll be doing that for free with Lansing residents on the 24th. And then there'll be a snow sculpture contest, which will be virtual throughout February. So lots of activities, keep an eye on our neighborhoods page. Want to remind our small business owners that the state's survival grants, which we are issuing through LEAK, are now available. I believe it's up to $20,000 per business, so please apply for the survival grants. We certainly want as many Lansing businesses through all over Lansing to apply, and we'll do our best to help folks to to make those applications. Additionally, our neighborhood grants and our neighborhoods in Bloom requests are due by the end of January. So I know it's early to think about neighborhoods in Bloom, but and neighborhood grants, but gotta get those applications in. And then the final announcement is that February 3rd will be the state of the city. That will be virtual, so my apologies to council members and any member of the community. We're gonna do a virtual to make sure that we are COVID compliant, but it will be televised. Finally, I want to address, I know there was a letter from a constituent that you all got dealing with the poverty exceptions. We, it was a great letter, so I appreciate from Mrs. Jackson sending the letter. In case folks don't know, state law recently changed, and now it requires poverty exemptions to be given out in 25, 50, and 100% possible increments. It overrides our ordinance unless we get our ordinance approved by the tax commission. So for this year, anybody that qualifies, so you have to have a certain income to meet the test, anybody that qualifies, we are gonna grant the 100% poverty exemption to anyone that qualifies. And then we're gonna ask the tax commission to review and approve our policy, because I think we're unique in having a policy. So we'll just continue to review this year to year. For this year, we will be giving the 100% exception to everybody. So we can address that. Sharon Freshman can come in and discuss that with with council at any point if you want. But if you get questions from your constituents on the poverty exemption, that will be given at the 100% level for this year. So that was a lot. Happy to talk to anybody offline or or chat or take questions, but thank you for your time, Mr. President and councilmembers.
No worries, you're giving me like seasonal whiplash with snow sculpture contests in neighborhoods in Bloom, so thank you.
Feel like it.
Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and I'll read into the record. The one public hearing that we have is in consideration of a noise special permit for the Public Services Department to allow work Miller Roads on Saturdays and Sundays from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM between mid-April and mid-October of 2021. That, along with the ordinances for passage and items on the consent agenda of resolutions for action, are eligible for discussion. President Spatafor, I don't know if you wanted to have.
Yeah, Mr. Vice President, did you have anything to add to that noise waiver? I know that was in your committee back in the day.
I can, I mean, if you want me to talk about it really quickly, what's happening is the Public Service Department is replacing the Miller Road culvert. And so this is actually going to, and so that's between Pennsylvania and Aurelius Road. And so that's actually going to necessitate a complete closure of that road. And so what they're doing is they're, they're actually, in terms of the Public Service Department, no contractor has been chosen yet. But they're asking for a waiver of the Norris ordinance, and that would be during the duration of the project for Saturdays, that would be 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And obviously, the hope is that they can lessen the amount of time that they have to have that that road closed by having that flexibility to work on the weekends.
Very much. That concludes that, Mr. Clerk, and we can go to public comment.
Okay.
Hold on a second, sorry, Jeremy, I missed, Councilmember Garza, excuse me.
Yeah, I haven't received any feedback from that. Has there been any negative feedback on the closure of the road?
I have not. In terms of the actual closing, no. In in terms of the noise waiver, we have noticed, my understanding is this is gonna impact two apartment complexes, I think, to the east, and then two residential houses to the west. We noticed everybody within those properties, and I have not heard that we've gotten any feedback of any measure at this point, or to this point.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, Councilmember, Councilmember Garza. Sorry, folks.
Okay, our first speaker is Loretta Stanaway, and again, after she is done, then no more raising your hand for this section.
I want to thank the council members for the diligence you exhibited today in questioning the proposed changes to the lease for the Lugnuts. I felt like there was a very robust and good conversation. A lot of significant questions were raised, and I hope that all of those questions are appropriately answered before you have to make a decision. So again, I congratulate you guys on doing your due diligence. The only other thing I had tonight was that I would ask the clerk, if he could, at some point, number the emails in support of the Morse Park Pool so that there is a clear understanding of how much support that project has among the public. That does it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And no one else has raised their hands, so that ends our public comment. We are to the referral of the public hearings. Number one, the noise special permit.
May on General Services.
Okay, we are to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend Chapter 1279 Appendix D of the zoning ordinance to expand the West Saginaw Overlay District. The ordinance is read a second time by its title and was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a lot to add. We talked about it again in committee of the whole. This is, it will include property, include the St. Wolf Hospital and the Medical Center. It's really an oversight. The property should have already been included in the overlay district. There is no specific plan for redevelopment at this point. It's more of kind of a housekeeping issue. It was unanimously recommended by the planning, by the planning.
Councilmember Spitzley did cut out there, but she did, I believe, was telling us that this was unanimously recommended by the board, and this was an oversight in the original drawing of the overlay district. Did I get that?
Yeah, I meant all of that, and I did pay my cable bill, so I don't know what's going on. I move the resolution.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Spitzley. Is there any, are there any other questions? All right, seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, zero NAs, the ordinance is adopted. Next, we have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, providing for the rezoning of a parcel of real property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1246.02 of the Code of Ordinance. Says the 720 2500 North Seer Street and 514 Erie Street from H. Light Industrial District to G1 Business District is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning and is on the order of immediate passage.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Miss, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a rezone. This used to be the Eric Cartz, well, it still is at this point. But the plan is to put two buildings there. One is a senior housing with 82 units, and then another one is a multifamily housing for 77 units. It's my understanding that the developer has folks in and around the community, and they are also supportive. It's a $34 million investment, and with that, oh, I'm sorry, it's already had a public hearing. And with that, I will move the resolution for approval.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, looks like your cable bill caught up with you there, Councilmember Spitzley. We heard all of it, so I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Okay, on the zoning ordinance, Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
AAs, zero NAs, the ordinance is adopted, and we are to the consent agenda.
Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, so in terms of the consent agenda, we have two items tonight. First is the confirmation of reapportment. This is for Darlene Fancher, the City of Lansing member of the Capital Air Transportation Authority Board for a term to expire September 30th, 2023. The second item is a confirmation of reapportment. This is for Gilliam Dawson, as an at-large member of the Elected Officers Compensation Commission for a term to expire October 1st, 2027. I would move the consent agenda.
Consent agenda has been moved. Is, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
AAs, zero NAs, the resolutions, the consent agenda is adopted, and we are to the item five, the council rule proposed revisions, which were previously moved at the prior meeting by Councilmember Spatafor, and so are eligible for a vote at this meeting.
All right, I got it. President Spatafor, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. As we discussed the previous meeting and committee whole meeting before, there are some revisions to the council committee structure here, proposed collapsing two committees, General Services and Public Service into one city operations committee. It also allows for standing committees to have up to four members. You know, we explained why many of these things were true. It does. You know, we explained why many of these things were true. It does eliminate the Intergovernmental Relations Committee for various reasons that we discussed at length. But I would move the resolution.
All right, so there is a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, Clerk Swob, would you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Satafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
All right, AAs, zero nays, that is adopted and we are to the re-referrals of item number six, the re-referrals of ten new items.
President Satafor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This resolution will move around all of the items that were referred previously by the president last year to committees that no longer exist and put them into committees that do exist. And if any of you raise your eyebrows about me referring the noise waiver to the Committee on General Services, that was well scripted. That noise waiver is also in this resolution, so all of those items will fall into their proper committee after this resolution is approved. So I would move the resolution.
All right, thank you, President Satafor. There's a motion on the floor. Further discussion. Seeing none, Clerk Swob, would you take the roll, please?
On the re-referrals, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Satafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
AAs, zero nays, that resolution is adopted and we are to the twenty twenty-one committee assignments.
And President Satafor.
Vice President, thank you. It is my duty as this year's president to assign committees and this resolution will do that. I will read them into the record, just for those that don't have the document in front of them. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the whereas clause. And I do want to say, I thank you all for responding and helping me and the vice president kind of come together and put what we think are some really good committees, giving people really good exposure to different different topics or topics that are of their interest and fit their strengths. And also give them an opportunity to improve in places where they may not have had some experiences previously. The goal was to make sure here also that everyone had a position of somewhat leadership, whether it was president, or I'm sorry, chair or vice chair of the committees. So that should be reflected, as I remember, and also that the workload was evenly distributed among the eight of us so that no few council members had a disproportionate, disproportionate balance of the council business. So I hope that the assignments reflect that. If there are issues, please feel free to reach out to me and the chair and we can see about if there are swaps that need to take place and things like that. But I do believe I've had an offline discussion with, with all of you, at least to some extent, about the assignments that you were looking forward to. So the Committee of the Whole, obviously, I will serve as the chair of that with Councilmember Hussein serving as the vice chair. And then you all are assigned to that. The City Operations Committee will be chaired by Councilmember Dunbar with myself as the vice chair and our vice president serving as the third member of that committee. Public Safety will be chaired by Councilmember Garza, continuing in that role with Vice Chair Carol Wood and Member Brian Jackson. Development and Planning will be chaired by Councilmember Spitzley, vice chaired by Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Betts and Councilmember Hussein will round out that committee in discussions with that committee. It worked very well last year, so there was, there's no changes in that format with the four members. Ways and Means will be continued to chair by Councilmember Wood with Councilmember Betts as the vice chair and myself as the third member. The Committee on Personnel will be chaired by our vice president per the council rules or perhaps the charter council rules. I myself as the vice chair, Councilmember Wood will be serving as our at-large member. Councilmember Garza will be serving as the ward member, continuing with that sentence on that committee for one more year, all four of us. The Equity Diversity Inclusion Committee, Councilmember Spitzley, will continue in her role as chair. Councilmember Jackson will continue, will be on that committee as vice chair. And Councilmember Dunbar will serve as its third member. So I would, I believe, if I haven't already done so, I will move that resolution.
All right, thank you, President Satafor. There is a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? Let's scroll through real quick. Seeing none. All right, Clerk Swob, would you take the roll, please?
Certainly. Okay, Councilmember Satafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
AAs, zero nays, that resolution is adopted, taking us to SLU four of twenty twenty.
President Satafor, you now have the gap.
Yes, I just got to say that the transcript is not quite spot on and it sometimes makes me laugh. All right, so Councilmember Spitzley, if you could, we are SLU four twenty twenty. Mr. Clerk, I don't know if you have to read anything in that.
I do not.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a special land use for a church, South pointers Ministry International. They are wanting to hold their services. The place is really a commercial building with different suites and so they would occupy one suite. There's already a church that occupies another suite. I think there's a laundromat there. One of the questions that were asked earlier in Committee of the Whole was about parking. And Sue Statuage assured everyone that there was ample parking. There was also a question about whether or not property taxes would be paid and we were assured that as they are leasing, property taxes will be paid. See, there are no objections to this special land use and with that, then I will move the resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Any questions on the SLU? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On the SLU, Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Satafor.
Yes.
AAs, zero nays, that resolution is adopted, so we are to the change of intent for the Lansing Fire Department for a portion of the Townsend ramp sale revenue.
Vice President Hussein. Oh, Adam, you're muted.
Oh, so sorry. We had, we actually had a conversation earlier about this in Committee of the Whole. We did have Jake Brower in to discuss this with us. We talked a little bit about the sale of this ramp back in two thousand and nineteen for, I believe it was eighteen million. At that time, we put aside, I think, about twelve million dollars for debt service on the ramp's construction, about another nine hundred thousand dollars went into the parking fund. We passed a resolution later that year that appropriated a portion of the remaining funds for various capital improvement projects. Some that included some, some projects, I should say, at the South Washington Office Complex and that would have been for the fire department. However, as of now, I think a hundred thousand dollars was initially appropriated for that, about ninety-three thousand dollars has went unspent. It's been determined by the fire department that there is a need for additional washers for turnout gear. That's been determined to be a health and wellness issue. And so what this resolution essentially does is approve the change of intent for, I think, the exact dollar amount, let me pull it up. Nine, it's ninety-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The, that's, those are the remaining funds for the SWAC renovations to be appropriated instead for the purchase of the turnout gear washers. So, and it deals with obviously the cost for installation and things like that, or things like that. So with that said, I would move the resolution dealing with the change of intent for part of the Townsend ramp sale revenue with the Lansing Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Are there other, anything else to add on this? Seeing none, if the clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Satafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
I said yes. I was unmuted. I said yes, yes.
AAs, zero nays, the resolution is adopted and we are to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
All right, Mr. Vice President, if you'd like to get this properly before us and then I'm sure there'll be questions and comments.
Sure, I would move the Parks and Recreation Master Plan two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, it has been moved. Before I start recognizing folks, I'm going to make sure Brett Koshinsky is either able to speak or in this meeting. So let's just, we'll give him, Dominic, just let him speak. Don't pull him in as a panelist.
Or too late, sorry.
No, that's all right. No, we'll just wait for just a second. I'll make sure he's connected, just in case there are questions that I'll want to have to go backwards here. I'm here. Oh, hey, Brett, okay, very good. Let's start with Councilmember Wood and then we'll go to Councilmember Betts and Hussein.
Thank you, President Satafor. We had a good Committee of the Whole meeting, Special Committee of the Whole meeting. And an opportunity to hear from the public and council to ask questions about the parks plan. I know I personally received over thirty-five emails from people. The, and of the thirty-five, thirty-four of them were supporting the Moore's Park Pool and then made other comments. And, and were supporting the restoration of that store pool. We did receive the email from Patty Lyons today that talked about Scott Woods. I also, excuse me, had posted this on a number of neighborhood pages and we, I had received comments from over a dozen different neighborhood groups and individuals that talked about things and that they would like to see in parks, anywhere from trash cans to, you know, improved play equipment to better mowing and, and those, that information, I will trans make sure is transmitted to the Parks Director and to the Parks Board. Because these are things that can be brought up in the budget is part of the budget planning. So I, again, appreciate all the input that we did have on this and will be supporting the parks plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Satafor. My one comment is in regard to the, I guess what I want to say is, with an eye to the future, I'd like to make sure that the Parks Department is in conversation with their sustainable manager regarding climate change initiatives and things like that that we can do in the parks. I'm inclined to support this because I know that we are looking at this. It is an objective of ours and I think that a lot of the improvements that we're looking at, including tree planting and things like that, will support sustainability efforts in the future. I just wanted to highlight that as something that in the future, we should be talking to our sustainability manager very specifically about these things because that is the job that they have been set out to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Appreciate that. Mr. Vice President.
Sure, just very quickly, I wanted to recognize Parks Director, Parks Director, sorry, Brett Koshinsky, as well as the Assistant to the Director, Kelly Brown. Obviously Greg Satterfield, who was an architect with Parks and Recreation and really the Parks Board. It was, it really resonated with me. You know, we were talking during the Special Committee of the Whole about the effort that was put forth in terms of really engaging deeply and then putting together what I believe to be a really sound master plan. And it was discussed how this was all done in-house and that some municipalities actually consult and contract for this type of work. And that by doing this in-house, we actually saved the city some twenty to thirty thousand dollars. So I think that is certainly noteworthy and I wanted to make sure that our appreciation for all of their efforts was on the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would echo the thanks to our city staff, including our Parks Director Brett Koshinsky for all the work that went into this. I know it's, it's a huge undertaking and you got, you all have worked very hard to incorporate a lot of voices, a lot of thoughts, a lot of planning into this. So very much appreciated and hopefully we'll get this approved so you can get it submitted by February one. So we do have a motion in front of us and I do not see any other hands. So with that, if Mr. Swob, please call the roll.
Okay, on adoption of the Parks Master.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just have one, one question. Brett, there were no changes made to the parks plan or any edits from what we saw as our draft. Is that correct?
No changes once it was submitted to you.
Okay, thank you.
No changes once it was submitted to us, that's what I heard.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, and I, Sher is confirming that. All right, so Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Satafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, zero nays, the resolution is adopted, the part of the plan is approved. And that takes us to the late item, the Deficit Elimination Plan.
Mr. Vice President, if you could make the motion and then we'll ask Mr. Brower to step in and tell us what it is we're doing.
All right, so moved.
The motion's been moved. I think we're going to wait for him. There we go. Jake, floor is yours.
Hello, hello. So you should have a resolution in front of you for the for the special assessments deficit elimination plan. You might remember this from last year, from around the same time we proposed the same plan that has been pretty much in existence where back in the day, a few years or so back before I started, there were some capital projects that went, were to be funded by special assessments. The general fund contributed a certain capital amount towards that and the special assessment fund has been designed to pay that amount back over the course of several years. And so because it's these revenues receivable are special assessments, they're exempted from the normal deficit elimination plan guidance that would allow receivables to be counted against the deficit. As such, we have to annually approve this plan that shows, yes, we are on track paying off this deficit in the fund as the fund was designed to do. And so you should have copies of both the current proposed deficit elimination plan and also the last year's copy for reference. You'll notice that in last year's copy, it projected to end the fund balance at negative eighty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-three. We actually ended at eighty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven, which is almost exactly the amount we expected. And so this should be staying on the same track. More special assessments could potentially be added to this list, but at this time, there is no plan to that I know of to modify our current structure.
Jake, councilmembers, I have the resolution in front of you. Are you all set? If I stop that share, raise your, okay, very good. Councilmember Wood, I see your hand, yes.
This does not pertain to this particular resolution. But because we are doing special assessments and the Montgomery Drain is a special assessment, is this the same process that we will have to do each year with that particular assessment?
We have designed the Montgomery Drain to be funded separately, so the Montgomery Drain is funded in two parts by the first part by point two six mils levied on all properties across the City of Lansing and the remainder by a special assessment on the benefited properties. And so it's, we have designed for, in cooperation with the Ingham County Drain Commission, a debt payment schedule that will follow our receipts of tax revenue.
And that doesn't answer my question. My question was, will we have to present this plan to the state as part of deficit elimination plan with the Montgomery Drain?
The short answer to that is no.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a procedural question. Why is this a late item?
Because it was supposed to go to Ways and Means and it would have normally gone to Ways and Means and then been approved at Cal or approved tonight as a matter of course. But because Ways and Means did not meet in the intervening two weeks, it ended up needing to come to us quicker. I did not know that. There is a deadline that this has to get put to the state and that deadline is before this body meets again.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Clerk, that, that does it. So if you please call the roll.
Okay, on the deficit elimination plan, Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes. You got, you're having. Yes.
Councilmember Beth.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, A A zero N A's, the resolution is adopted. And we are to, now to speaker registration for public comment on city government related matters. So if you want to address the City Council on any city governance issue, please begin raising your hand using the Zoom functions of star nine on a phone, raise hand in the chat room or Alt-Y or Option-Y. And in the meantime, we are to report to City Officers Boards and Commissions.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move that all items be considered as written full and that the proper referrals be made by you, President Spatafor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Clerk.
On the referrals, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
I'm sorry, yes. Just reading.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Councilmember Beth.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yeah.
A A zero N A's, the referrals are ordered. We have from the City Clerk, Minnesota Boards and Commissions.
Place and file.
And Executive Order twenty-two-one dash zero-zero-one.
Place and file.
Letters from the Mayor, City of Lansing Twenty-One Annual Report.
Committee of the Hole and the Internal Auditor.
Grant Acceptance Tri-County Regional Planning Commission.
Committee on Ways and Means and the Internal Auditor.
Second Amendment to the Stadium Lease and Service Agreement.
Committee of the Hole.
Fees, proposed reduced park and recreation softball fees.
Committee on Ways and Means and the Internal Auditor.
Soul Source Purchase Human Resources Department request for Siegel Waters Consulting as the vendor for classification services.
Committee on Ways and Means and the Internal Auditor.
Official year twenty-twenty budget carryforwards.
Ways and Means and the Internal Auditor.
Communications and Petitions. Communication to change the Poverty Tax Exemption Program.
Place and file.
And communications in support of the repair of Moore's Park Pool.
Place and file.
Communications regarding protecting the community from violent policing.
Place and file.
And affidavit of disclosure for David Odom, Jr. of the Fire Department.
Place, no, Ethic Board.
All right, we are to remarks by Councilmembers.
Sure, before I open it up, I just wanted to remind folks that Committee of the Hole will be at five o'clock at our next meeting, so that is on the eighth of February. I want to also let you know that in your inbox now should be the committee assignments as were solidified by the resolution, but also your outside agencies that, you know, had been requested, those did not have to be read into the record. So those outside agencies should track with what you've requested or have been serving historically, but please double check those. Ms. Boke is going, is going to send out letters to those organizations, letting them know of their liaisons and status there. And then lastly, I know we did this officially as an action from the Committee on Personnel, but would like to welcome back to the team Eric Brewer, who is serving in the, on a contract basis right now as our internal auditor. While we figure out the, the full-time position, Mr. Brewer is hard at work already, working on many, many things that have been piling up on, on his old desk, his new desk as we went without an auditor for a bit. So he is back helping us out and we really appreciate him being here. So that is it from me. Are there any other council members who wish to add to this evening? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, that concludes this portion of the agenda.
Okay, then we are to the Mayor's comments.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I forgot one exciting announcement that I want to make sure everyone knows. We will be adding a, an ice skating rink to our downtown. We've been talking with the Community Foundation about this for a while and I believe it's now finalized. So there will be an artificial ice rink on the City Hall Plaza, which we're going to be laying down hopefully in the next few weeks, next week or two or three, where people can come and skate. We won't have to worry about it not being cold enough. When we tried this at Washington Park, it wasn't cold enough and we really couldn't keep it going for all that long. So we will have an ice skating rink on City Hall Plaza. Thank you to the Community Foundation for, for leading the way along with our park staff and facility staff. And hopefully it'll be up in the next, hopefully before the next City Council meeting, we'll have an artificial ice skating arena where, or ice skating area where people can come and enjoy the winter in a socially distanced way while we're, we're dealing with COVID. So forgot to mention that earlier, wanted to make sure that, to let you all know before you come to City Hall and see ice or artificial ice rink in front of the door. So I'm excited about that. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor.
We are to public comments. City Government Matters are, and again, we will be closing the sign up after the first speaker finishes their time. So we will start with Cynthia, I'm sorry, we will start with Ash, followed by Cynthia Ward.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I'm speaking today to demand a vote of no confidence for Andy Shore, to demand a hearing on the Lansing Police Department murder of Anthony Hulan and the police brutality of Baker Street, and to demand that the council do something to force police officers to wear their masks. Andy Shore lied to voters to get their vote, turned around and stabbed them in the back, then ran a PR campaign to try to obscure that reality. He needs to go, even if a no confidence vote wouldn't remove him, it would signal to the people of the city that this council understands what he's done and cares about the people that he's harmed and may harm in the future. The coroner ruled Anthony Hulan's death a murder. The officials like Chief of Police lied to us when saying that something like George Floyd's murder couldn't happen in Lansing, knowing that it had just happened to Anthony Hulan. The police brutality in Baker Street happened not so long after the truth of the murder of Anthony Hulan came out to the public. Clearly, officers in the city didn't take that murder seriously. That, that was committed by their peers seriously because they used similar tactics and could have done it again. There must be a hearing on the murder of Anthony Hulan and the police brutality we witnessed in Lansing before it happens again. And the last thing I have to say is that you, you need to do something about the reality that police officers are choosing not to wear their masks, like they're doing something that they find and punish others for doing. You're the ones that voted to allow them to enforce this rule that, again, they're not following. You're partially responsible for this injustice and they work in close proximity with people, sometimes entering homes and businesses. This makes their arbitrary decisions to not wear masks a threat and a danger to public safety. And given, giving them such wide discretion to decide when or when not to wear a mask is ridiculous and their peers are not holding them accountable. So please do something about this. So in summary, there must be a vote of no confidence. There must be a hearing on brutality committed by Lansing-based police officers. And you need to do something about them endangering citizens during this pandemic. Thank you and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. And now the first person is finished. That is the end of accepting additional raised hands. So next is Cynthia Ward, followed by Lansing Zone.
Hi, good evening, Council. I just wanted to, I'm Cynthia Ward, District Court Judge. I just wanted to make sure that your viewing audience was aware that the CDC eviction moratorium has been extended until March thirty-first. And that is the temporary stopping of evictions for non-payment of rent for tenants who qualify for the protection. Tenants can find out if they qualify for the protection by going to Michigan Legal Help at www.michiganlegalhelp.org. And if tenants do qualify for the protection, each person, the tenant and each person named in the lease will have to submit a declaration document to the landlord. This information has been updated on our, the court's website. So if people want to find out more information about the CDC order temporarily halting evictions for non-payment of rent, they can visit the court's website under the landlord tenant section. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lansing Zone, followed by Farhan Sheikh Omar.
Appreciate the time. Mike Lynn again here. Again, another BS Council meeting. Nothing of substance being done here. I guess we look forward to February third for the BS State of the City Address. I want to let you all know that America Twenty Life will be doing a real State of the City Address so that we can fight back Andy Shore's propaganda to make sure that people absolutely know what's really going on in this city. I mean, you're like the Ringling Brothers, Andy. I mean, every time you come on here, all public comment is about some ice rink or neon lights going in someplace. I mean, I just don't understand how this council sits in the same room as you with all the brilliance that's sitting in those chairs. It's just beyond me, man. I, I really just don't understand how you, how you're still here. Is there not another job for you somewhere? Is there not gas that could be pumped somewhere or stocked shelves that need to be stocked? That's pretty much all you're qualified to do. Outside of that aspect, again, America Twenty of Life will be doing our our State of the City Address to, to bring actual facts and truth. I just can't imagine what yours is going to sound like. And the way that you guys keep continuously pushing propaganda on this city. You know, when you get some candidness against you, you know you're going to have a battle and an uphill battle out, out of this world. Like you have to know that Patricia Spitzley is going to come after you pretty tough. You know, she knows everything. You know, she's running against you. If Verge is running against you, hell, I might run against you just so I can be on the stage to give you hell. And every time you try to give some propaganda out, I may just throw my hundred bucks in to jump in that, in that fight. I'm not sure. I wouldn't be running to win. I'd just be running to make you lose because I care that much about this city. So again, another senseless BS City Council meeting. I'm getting tired of watching, but I do anyways, just so I can, you know, see, see what, what's really going on in your guys' minds. I still don't really know. I talked to most of you council members outside of here and I know you guys have disdain. I just don't understand why it doesn't show up here. You guys all look like a happy bunch. That's all good and great. But this city is hurting, completely hurting. January twenty-third, two days ago, the Lansing Police Department put out another ode to the dog Sabre that they killed and blamed on my brother A.J. McKinstry when I asked you, Andy Shore, not to have that done again. And then they put out a, after all the backlash you guys got, because it does hurt this city, it hurts the people in this city. If you're not from here, don't know what, what happened in that situation, there was a whole lot of corruption, just as there is now in the city surrounding that murder. And to you guys that keep throwing that damn dog up here every year, like some family members out here needing to see that from you all is just ridiculous, man. I just can't wait. There's some big ass things coming, man. I, I'm just telling you, I can't wait. Peace out.
Thank you. Next, we have Farhan Sheikh Omar, followed by Ethan Schmidt.
Good evening, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, you know, last week I saw a lot of you guys pay tribute to Dr. King. And I wanted to share one of Dr. King's quotes with you guys. And I quote, he says, "We need leaders, not in love with money, but in love with justice, not in love with publicity, but in love with humanity." Which brings me to, to the mayor. Mr. Shore, when your retirees came out to City Hall, you did not come out and address their issues. When they came out to your house, you did not come out and address their issues. However, when we had a bunch of white men at the Capitol with AR-15s, you felt very safe walking around downtown. So my question to you is, why are you so afraid of your constituents and your retirees? But you felt very safe being around a bunch of white men who had AR-15s? I think, like, I personally don't have anything against you, Mr. Mayor, it's just that I look at your actions and it speaks volume. Which also brings me to Peter Spatafor. Mr. Spatafor, you and the mayor released a letter urging the governor to, to deploy the National Guards, then our National Guard. The FBI had already released a bulletin point telling governors to get ready their National Guards. There was no need for you guys to release a letter besides just doing it for publicity. You guys are not doing it because you care about this city. And I know election is, you guys are in reelection and you guys are trying to do whatever you guys can, take a bunch of pictures for your flyers. But again, if you're gonna pay tribute to Dr. King and write his quotes, follow it. Dr. King practiced what he preached. Many of you guys on here, you guys don't practice what you guys preach. You guys say whatever looks good, sounds good, whatever's going to get you guys votes, and then that's it. We had seven homicides in one month in this city. And not once have you guys addressed that issue. We've had twenty-some people die in this city because of gun violence and not one of you guys have addressed that issue. But you guys, whenever there's time to talk about defund the police, you guys are all advocates for the police department. However, they're not solving crimes, they're not stopping crimes, they're not preventing crimes. So when are you guys going to step in and actually advocate for the people in this community? Jeremy Garza, you're one of the biggest advocates for the police department, yet the police are not solving any crimes, they're not preventing any crimes, they're not stopping any crimes. And yet they're getting forty-some million every year. So are, are you guys just going to keep reinvesting in this stock that's not returning any benefit? To me, it just makes no sense. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Ethan Schmidt.
Thank you for giving me the time today. I would just like to really express my disgust and outrage at the Lansing Police Department putting a, a tribute to a dog and ignoring the human being that died during that. I mean, you all know what that is, so I don't need to really go over it in detail. But I think it brings, it brings us to the larger point that there's a police department that is quite frankly out of control and not being held remotely accountable. And I'm talking to all the people who should be holding them accountable. We have been told over and over again, the police department is different, they're not like everyone else. And I don't want to bring up the same point that has been brought up. But if you recall, they openly lied. And was only about, especially about what happened downtown to your guys, they covered up a murder and that is, again, objectively true. They covered it up and it was only because of, because of somebody else that we even found out. And I think at a certain point, you have to say, we have to take control back from the police and bring it back to the citizens and to the people who elected those citizens. And right now, you have police department. I refuse to believe none of you talks to the police department and ask them to take down that, that post. I firmly believe that at least one person talked to them and they obviously refused to do so. It is still up right now, despite the very obvious community backlash against it. I refuse to believe that they are so hurt by the loss of, and I love dogs as much as the next guy, but I refuse to believe that they, you know, tribute to a dog, are, are this determines to hurt the citizens of the city? And are, and the fact that they are almost certainly rejecting the words of elected officials to not take it down tells me that there's larger purpose to this. If it was simply paying tribute to a dog, I don't think they'd have a problem keeping it up. But I think they're trying to send a message and I, I know it can sound conspiratorial and I don't mean to, but you can't tell me they don't know the impact that this caused. And you can't tell me that they couldn't just take this down very easily and say, we apologize. And if none of you did talk to the police department asking them to take this down, that's even worse. That says that all of you saw this really horrible, priceless post and didn't do anything about it. So I choose to assume good intent and assume that some of you talked to the police department. And in this case, how, how are you getting bullied by a department that you run? I refuse to believe that you can do absolutely nothing about this. It was disgusting what they did and I would really like to see some accountability starting in City Hall about this. I'm pretty disappointed that it was not brought up at all today, to be honest. And I hope that, that changes in the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was our final speaker tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. There, there is, there's no further business before the committee, the council. So at eight forty-one, we are adjourned this evening. the council, I, so at eight forty-one, we are during this evening.